Hi. Um, the CTA is concerned recently about the lack of substitute nurses that we have, which is impacting our most fragile students. So we were wondering if addressing the substitute nurse pay would alleviate some of the concern. That's one thing. And then we did for an insurance update, we've met with the town and we're continuing our conversation about health insurance, the selectmen meet Wednesday night to discuss it. So that's all I have. No sports games tonight?
Started at seven.
Just a side note, we did do a sign a contract with an agency to get some assistance with nursing right now, mostly for, as you mentioned, particularly we have one medically fragile student we need to make sure that we're covering. And I did have a discussion with a couple of other nurses about sort of what the, what sort of a more comparable per diem rate might be that would make it more attractive for them to sub here. So, once I kind of put that together, that might be something that we want to, we want to look at as well.
Steve, once the select board meets and they talk about the insurance options, do those options go back to the, to the teachers to review? How does that information get back through to all the staff? So that way, like when you're, when you're weighing, is it A, B, or C? Like, we're making what's in the best interest of everyone involved? What's that process like?
Right now, the process, they presented sort of the five, it was five, we have four.
Four.
Sorry, we have four major presentations. And then I think at your last meeting, it's mostly the unions that get the input to say which ones they would like to go with. Did we make one recommendation?
We made one recommendation.
Okay, and then now it's up to the selectmen to accept that recommendation, pretty much, right? Or approve it again?
Yeah, I'm not quite sure of the whole process.
The final, like, what's the final step?
Right.
But there's one recommendation that's been made. And then, so hopefully that'll get approved. And then, once that's, once that's done, I'm sure they'll start getting, the information usually will come from the town hall to get out, like, next year's new raids and open 1-1 period and all that kind of stuff.
Do all the town unions have to agree on the same one?
I don't think they all have to agree, but they all get like a, a say.
All of us, all of the unions meet.
Right, I'm going to talk to like police, fire, all them, and the school.
Yeah, it's one, it's one decision-making block. So, we all met.
And you guys came with consensus?
And we came to a consensus.
Oh, you already did that, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So now that, and that one has been the one that the selectmen will look at to hopefully find, give a final endorsement on Wednesday?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. ETA?
Hello. I'll keep it short and sweet. We had a successful Leap Day event, that we hid over 2,000 plastic frogs between the elementary school and the middle school. The kids had a blast. One of the kids quoted that frogs were the new currency. I thought that was pretty cool. The scholarship is still open for seniors until April 30th. We encourage any and all to look into if they meet the eligibility and to apply. We have money and we want to give it out. We are in full bingo mode. Family Bingo Night is March 15th. Doors open at 5:30 for raffles. We are truly thankful for the abundance of support from the community. Everybody is stepping in and doing amazing things for us. We are looking forward to our celebrity callers, some of which are seated among the board tonight. And we also have a special attendance from scratch from Clinton Savings Bank. He will be there. He will be doing a photo op as well as pulling the first bingo ball. The grade challenge that's linked with the family bingo is still going on. We have to admit, it's not as robust as it was last year, but we're still giving it our all and hoping that we can spark some interest of the students and their families and finish strong. So we did reach out to the administration and had them send out some emails to the families, because that's where we want to give away a pizza and treat, a party for the kid, the highest grade level at each school. And our next meeting is on March 7th at 6:15. And again, we're focusing on bingo. And that's it. Thank you.
All right, so the first thing up on here is a public hearing for the 2024 Student Opportunity Act Plan. I did hand out packets, you guys, there's some packets here. There's the packets that you see tonight, there's no substantive changes based on, to the one that was presented at the last school committee meeting. It's really just, there was some grammar and typos and that kind of stuff that we tried to go through and clean up. Like I said, the big, we're, we're not really changing anything, we're kind of keeping on with what we're doing. And a big part of this is that, you know, really we're using most of our, our, essentially our ESAR increase, our SOA increase this year is really going to help fund the ESAR cliff. So, that's what it is. This is just one of those things, when they pass the Student Opportunity Act, you have to file these every three years, so here we are. So the, the point of this was to just give anyone an opportunity to share if they, if anyone had other input or concerns or questions on this plan. And then the timeline is to hopefully have you guys take a vote to approve it at the next meeting on the 25th. And then we will, I have to submit it by April 1st. So I don't know if there's any questions or comments or input on the Student Opportunity Act Plan from the public.
Steve, I just have one.
Yeah.
There's 11 positions that will basically leave ESAR coding for funding and go to SOA for funding. Then that goes till 2027, is that right? SOA, like, how long is that, how long is that program?
So, but, so the thing with the SOA though is, it's an increase in your Chapter 70 funding that those increases remain.
Okay.
So it's not like, like ESAR was one-time funding that, once that money was expended, it was off the table. Student Opportunity Act is actually an increase in your Chapter 70 that remains for that baseline. So once you get them in there, now you just got to deal with the, the delta every year on raises or whatever.
Okay, so, I just want to make sure that there wasn't like a, another funding that we would experience during SOA.
Should be all right. I'm hoping that, you know, I think we'll, I think we'll, we'll make it, I'll talk about budget later, but I think, I think we'll be all right.
Thank you.
All right. Yes, sentencing, no comment. We have staffing updates. We had two resignations, Caitlin Roach, an ABA IA at CES, and Amy Davis, an ABA teacher at CES, both resigned. And Elizabeth O'Malley, I was recently hired as an IA at the elementary school. So, just kind of, as we try to just meet the ever-changing needs of the students, just try to keep kind of filling those. As far as FY25 budget, I don't have any, we didn't, we haven't made any official changes to the budget. Where we are right now is really just, we're still basically, our official budget would be Budget Version A, which we presented last time. We have an admin meeting on March 11th. Annette and I have started looking at the FY24 unencumbered funds. For example, you know, there's always like a line item that says, like, supplies, right? If for a building, like CMS instructional supplies or CMS office supplies or something like that. And what we're trying to do, we carry those pretty much every year, and a lot of times those, a lot of times what those might go to is, you know, dry erase markers and construction paper and whatever else that we might need for those supply rooms. So we're looking at trying to make sure that we can try to expend any unencumbered funds in those existing line items right now, so that we can maybe take them out of, you know, reduce next year's spending by kind of making sure we have those supplies stocked up on now. And I know we mentioned before things like sickly buyback, you know, we kind of have a sense of who's retiring now, what that's going to cost us, and we might try to pay that off with FY24 money, which should allow us to reduce that number for FY25. So that's kind of our next step that we're going to start on the 11th. Our goal would be on the 25th to get you a Budget Version B. And that would probably be looking at sort of what we were able to accomplish at that meeting on the 11th, as far as, you know, okay, if we have $5,000 left in this line item for this year, we can reduce next year's maybe by five grand, that kind of stuff, and then we'll see where we're at. And then April 8th will be the public hearing, so we're, Kelly and I are already working on trying to get that posted. We might not have a final budget at that point, but it's obviously, it's a chance for people to kind of weigh in if they have any input, particularly if we have any different decisions that we need to make. And then we'll sort of wait and see when the finance committee wants us to present to them, and then obviously June 3rd's the town meeting. As far as the budget process goes, right now, they're still doing their joint ways and means, public hearings, and they, their superintendents are still urging to look at it, you know, increasing the inflation and also an increase in minimum aid. Increase in minimum aid wouldn't really impact us directly, because we're not a minimum aid school. But I'm sure if they're going to do one, they're probably going to do the other, so that everyone gets a little bit more. So we'll see what happens on that. They say around April should be when the House comes out with their budget. That's, that's the best timeline I could get from the state's website was April. So, we'll see, you know, hopefully if things are moving well, maybe we'll get that, you know, early April, late March, and we can kind of, you know, I think that's just the next thing that I'm interested to see is, is there any movement on how they're funding Chapter 70 from the governor's budget? So, I think what we, what we experienced historically was that, you know, the governor's budget usually never went down from Chapter 70 spending. Whenever the governor came out, typically as it went through the House, went to the Senate, if anything, the Chapter 70 money went up. So, it's just a matter of, it's something that's going to impact us or not, since we are already getting a Student Opportunity Act increase of about a million dollars. But I think we'll be, we'll keep working at it and figuring it out, and I think we'll be, we'll find a way. Academic achievement, I don't really have any major updates on this one. This is just sort of, you know, we always try to bring back some of these, and what's funny is, you know, academic achievement, which you might think is brilliant, is probably our biggest goal, and there's only like three, you know, things in it. But making, you know, there are big ones, developing and applying best practices. So that's one of the things we have been doing with our consultants, as we look to try to sort of, you know, lean off the consultants, is that some of what we've been doing with them is developing these instructional handbooks that we're using to try to capture those best practices. Obviously, the next one, aligning enhanced curriculum with the Massachusetts Curriculum Frameworks, that's something that we've been doing all along, trying to implement the high-quality instructional materials. And then the student growth on standardized tests, obviously we give you those updates when we have those in the beginning of the year and those types of things. So not, not a whole lot to report on that, but it's just one of those things that, you know, we always want to kind of check back in on these and make sure that we're kind of doing what we said we were going to do. As far as the building project update, not a lot to share since the all boards meeting that everyone was at. I did try to update the, in your packet, you have sort of an updated version of the Frequently Asked Questions document I had been working on. You know, we tried to talk a little bit more at the beginning there, like, what is the CMS MSBA project? Tried to talk a little more about the understanding that, you know, this, I stole this sentence right from the MSBA, that this program is a non-entitlement competitive program, grants are distributed by the MSBA Board of Directors based on need and urgency, as expressed by the districts and validated by the MSBA. So I just think that that's one thing that I know, we've been trying to sort of share, because I think not everyone knows that context is really that, you know, you don't just sign up for an MSBA grant. And they, you have to sort of state your case, and they literally come and look at the building and say, yeah, qualified. And then, tried to just, you know, there's a few things that were updated with the schematics, and then tried to update the, the budget numbers, the, the average impact. So, you know, the, it looks like the local share was down from our earlier estimates, down to about 61.3 million, which would be about $605 for the average homeowner. Between now and when that full 605 hits, we would probably lose about $110, $112 in other capital debt that's going to expire, or at least 76 of it before then, and maybe 30 of it right, you know, right around the same time. And then, tried to share some of the other information that they, that they shared regarding the base repair. And at the very end, on page, well, on page eight there, I tried to kind of put a summary there. So if we look at it, there's, you know, there's going to be two options, like you either vote yes to approve the MSBA project, which approves the construction of a new Clinton Middle School and the acceptance of the MSBA grant, or the total project cost is 139.3 million, MSBA grant is not at 77.9, and it costs the town a 61.3. Voting no, opts out of the MSBA program. Okay, so basically, we would have gone through all this, they would have approved everything, and then we would be saying, no, we don't want to go forward. That would put us back at a situation where we're going to need to repair the existing middle school. I just tried to make it clear there that voting no doesn't automatically mean like the money to fix that building has been approved. It just means that that's the next step, is we're going to have to come back at it and say, okay, next year, now we're asking for, you know, 28 million to get the HVAC system going, or the engineering system got started, or whatever it is. But the estimated total cost of updating that building was 101.56 million total, more of that 75 million was that tier one. You know, so I think, I mean, I think when you look at these numbers, the way it's settled out, it seems to be cost-efficient to go with the MSBA project, but it's, you know, it's, it's up to the voters.
Is this document available on the website?
It will be very shortly. I wanted to kind of like premiere it here, and then we'll try to get that out there. We're also working on getting it translated, and I know that we're going to try to share it through our LPAC and those types of things, so.
So this has been updated since the last one we definitely had the middle school meeting?
Since the?
All Boards?
The all boards.
Yeah, I updated this based on the all boards presentation. Yep, yep.
Steve, I'd just say the whole package is well put together, but the, I talked about this before, but the information on page three and four, the county files, dispels all the rumors in the midst, you see on social media about what this is going to cost and brings to town. Not only that, again, I don't put this together, but, you know, show them what's coming on, you know, like, because, you know, as most people, maybe, because he was a selectman, most people don't even know we, we're still paying on some of this stuff. And then, you know, by the time this bill is due, we won't be paying on it.
Yeah.
You know, so, you know, I saw some things even after our last meeting, the myths of what this is going to cost, and it's, now you spell it right out here, this is the actual crunching, you know, it's what your house is built, it's all that, so, yeah, it's a good job.
And that's the thing, we're just hoping to try to get as much information out there, so that people can make an informed decision. That's all I can hope for, is that, you know, we present the, we present the facts, and then people can look at it and decide what, what they want to do. And like, to your point, I know a lot of people, it's, there's a little bit of speculation and estimation, and it's like, if we're kind of saying, well, no, we've looked into that, but this is actually the dollar amount, you know, yeah.
Certainly makes it a lot more appealing when you say to yourself, you could pay a whole lot less for a brand-new school, or pay a whole lot more and roll the dice, because ultimately, you don't know what's going to happen with that school over the next eight years, you just have no way of knowing. And I think there's also, that, I would be worried if I was a town in Clinton as well around, you know, you partner with the MSBA, you wait three years, you get on the list, they partner with you, and they offer up 80 million for a project, and then you can't get it done. Good luck on the next project that comes around, when they look at you and say, they can't get it done. You should, that money could be better served in a different community where they care enough to get it done. So like, I would be worried about that too, like, from a taxpayer's perspective. I mean, the tea leaves are lining for us to do this for a lot of reasons.
I think another major one is, like I mentioned, if we, if this is voted through, we would start almost immediately, right? We would roll right into the project, which means you're looking at probably everything being done in the next three years, right? This, these numbers have the escalation values kind of built into them, assuming we're going to be doing this over the next, like, three years. If you end up having to go, try to go back at it and chunk it into, however we chunk it with these, you know, tier one projects and stuff, you know, if we don't end up getting to one of those projects for seven years, well, there's, there's more escalation in there, it's going to be a more, it's going to be more of a project. So, so I think that there's a, you know, I think, I think, I think sometimes that's the, there's like a hidden cost in there, I think sometimes, if, you know, if you do things slowly like that, it's going to be more expensive when you, when you get to them, but.
It really escalates faster than that, because the, if you spend 60 million in and you get 80, you get $140 million value in today's dollars. If you incrementally make each one of these repairs, you're now, you forfeited the 80 million dollars, you're paying renovation costs always significantly higher than new construction. So that, if you hypothetically say you were going to invest 60 million in it over the next 10 years, that 60 million isn't buying you anywhere near what it would with a new school. And escalation, although the escalation is built into the new school, it's not built into what it's going to cost you to make these repairs. So if, over the next 10 years, you spend $40 million base repairing that building, you're getting 15 to 20 million dollars worth of value for your money compared to building a new school. It's, it's outrageous what, what, what the benefit to the taxpayer would be if you don't build the new school.
That's great context.
Has there been a breakdown of what actually needs to be fixed on the school and, and providing that?
It's in here. Yep, it's in here.
It's in here? Okay. Because like Mr. Bailey said on social, oh, the school is just fine, it's just great as it is, and it's like, mm, no, no. So we can make sure that we provide that right now?
I think, I mean, I think one of the biggest ones you can look at right there, and this has been, this has been looked at by, you know, the designers, it's been looked at by the construction managers, it's been, you know, gone through estimators, that just to do our HVAC system is, is projected to be a $13.6 million project.
And that's on a building that's current value is just over 12.
So that's, and, and all that is, is just to get the boilers, get the, the heating units in each room up to coat, like, all that kind of stuff. And then, now you got to connect them all again, and you got to do that. And then, then like I said, there's a lot of stuff that gets rolled into that, because you don't want to keep like ripping off ceilings and then putting ceilings back up, right? So it's like, well, while you've tore the ceilings down, while you're fixing the HVAC system, you're going to fix the plumbing or the electrical, because it's exposed. So now, you know, now you're talking a big, a bigger project that's going to have to go, and that's when they say it's more of that, like, you know, that's where they get that 75 million of that sort of tier one of really what, that's not even getting into things like, you know, more cosmetic or energy efficiency, that kind of thing, the 75 is really just the, to keep it going.
Well, any one project you choose on that list triggers all the things you need to do to bring that building up to code.
Right. Those trigger those additional.
So then you're, then you're kind of chasing them. This is, I like the eight pages though, this is good. It condenses it down to something that's a lot more consumable for just the average person that doesn't really, if you're not into construction, or you, you want to really distill it down to understand, and I really like, I really like this format.
I know I'm, I know that the Clinton Chamber of Commerce is doing some videos or TV shows or something like that, so I signed up to be one of their guests. I'll be talking to them on March 15th. So one of my goals is to kind of use this as, as my talking points at that. And then, as I said, we'll start getting this out on social media, and our goal is also to translate this document, so that we can start sharing it with, with everybody, so, so everyone can kind of get a sense of it. CMS principal search update, so right now, I guess we're in the, we're calling sort of the second round of interviews. The search committee met, they went through, they recommended candidates to me. I'm meeting with those candidates, it's just not just me, but it's me and like some of the different admin, we started that today. Should have those done by the end of the week. And then our goal at that point would be probably to name finalists, and then, depending on the number of finalists, see what we might want to do as far as whether we're going to do like a parent night, or, you know, meet with the staff, or both, or meet with students, that kind of stuff. We'll kind of see sort of what our, what our number of finalists are after we get through the second round and where we stand on that. So, you know, the first candidate, I met with the first candidate today, it was, it went well, so, you know, I'm hopeful, I'm hopeful that, you know, we'll have a successful process here. I think, I think that's all I have.
Enter from curriculum. Safety, was it, what, a couple months ago?
Yeah, we probably got another one coming, oh no, we're going to do one after the, probably at the end of April, or something like, we're going to do after the.
Marquee, but I'm, I'm going to work with our last meeting.
Yep.
And we get, what, 10 policy letters in here for Google for a second reading?
So these were new policies, last, last meeting they were approved in the first reading. I don't know if there was any questions, concerns, or comments on them, I have not received any.
I'm going to ask him to say.
I'll check, I'll check.
Anyway, I retain a motion to approve the 10 policy letters for a second reading.
Second.
Any other discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Nothing for you. So, so let's see, Stephen, I heard you guys tried with the maintenance bay, it was going to go back further, baseball guy. Nobody's had on that. I know it's still within time.
Yeah, I know he's still working on it, I don't know exactly where he is, I'm sure we're probably due for a facilities update one of these meetings, so we'll try to probably get it there, right? I mean, I know it's not, it's not off his radar, he mentioned to me the other day, I just don't know exactly where he is, so I don't want to speak to him.
Nothing on negotiations, that's good. Anything on old business?
Oh, the soccer.
Soccer. Oh yeah, so, at the last meeting, we had reps from youth soccer, and I told them we'd probably put that on for a vote for this one. Just slipped by me, I didn't, I didn't get any questions, so to make sure we can leave it, like, so I guess we want to discuss it tonight, if there's anyone has any questions, and then we could, if there's anything we need to bounce off Sharon before we, I hate to vote and pass it and find out that's something we approved or disapproved. And then they got off, they lost, started flying, can't answer, and we get something they can't do.
So, I know we sent everything to Sharon, but it wasn't until last week that we got that out, and then I haven't heard back from her yet on her, like, I haven't got a formal answer from her yet on that. So, she's working on that right now. But, I gave her a, it was a generic, like, hey, can you look at this, I'm sure other towns do it, what are your concerns? I didn't have any super specific questions for her. So if you guys have specific questions that you want me to ask her, I can do that as well. But, right now, I sent, we sent her the proposal. I, I think maybe I shared sort of my, one of my concerns, which was just sort of, is our ability to kind of restrict, you know, because that just become, I feel like that could become a messy area if you're starting to say like, no, this, this sign is okay, and this sign's not okay, you know, without clear guidelines in advance, so. And then, so, but I'm sure other schools have done it, so there might be things that she has that are very clear, and if they have something written up, then we can, we can take a look at it.
Does the MIA share any guidelines around that? Like, I would imagine it would be simple stuff like, no liquor stores, no tobacco, no guns, no, like, whatever, like.
Excuse me?
No offense, but I'm saying in regard to like, if the MIA says like, if, if anything that would be considered something that would inside any kind of rule, you can't even chew tobacco if you're at a football game, like, that's, that's in their rulebook, like, it's in their handbook. So I, I would think if we stay away from that kind of stuff, that would be the, the thing that Sharon would probably want to look at.
I just, I think you get into those like gray areas of, not gray areas, but, you know, you have a restaurant that also has a bar, and they're okay, because they have a restaurant seating, but this is a bar that doesn't sell food, they're not okay, because they're, you know, like, and just, and, and I'm fine with if we come up with, with criteria, I think we just want to make sure we have that criteria established, we're not making it up on the fly, you know, there's sort of a clear-cut criteria. And I do think the other thing you run, not run the risk of, and not that it's, you know, we're going to, the fall is going to be leading up to election season, right? So, I mean, are you turning, are political ads allowed? If so, like, you know, do we just say no, does it just say no political ads in there, or could people start taking those out, in which case are you turning the whole thing into that? So, so there's a lot of, I just think those are the types of things. So, so there's a lot of, I just think those are the types of things that we would just want to, you know, it seems like a simple thing, it's a good thing, I think, you know, overall, it's a good idea, I think we want to try to work with them however we can, whether it's allowing them to put permanent ones up there, or temporary ones up there, or whatever it could be. But I just think we just need to be smart about it because you don't want to, you know, you don't want to, I think the biggest thing is we don't want to look like we're playing favorites or making things up on the fly, like, there's a set of criteria, and, you know, it's not, this party is okay to, to put ads up, but this party's not, or something like, you know, you don't want it to be anything like that, so.
It's probably more a question for them, I mean, kind of, if they could put them up and put them up just while they're using the field.
Yeah.
You know, like the political ones, the signs you see around now, they have the metal...
The lawn signs?
Yeah, the lawn signs do that, thank you. And then, yeah, so they, while they're, so it would look like the, the school's endorsing a business over another, you know, because...
Or even maybe even like karamires, like zip ties on a fence, so they could put them up Friday, they're there all weekend, and you take them down Sunday night or something, you know, like, so I think all that stuff is kind of, you know, those are all different options we could work with too. And then that might take a little bit of, at least for the first time we try this, it might take a little bit of the pressure off because it's not necessarily permanently endorsed there while we're having school, you know, so.
They use the field, for that corner of the field, they get that point out, so they only use the corner by itself.
Yeah, yeah. Which it's not like we're taking, you know, it's not like we have gym classes going out there every single day, you know, so. And really in the spring, we hardly use that field at all, it would be more in the fall season when, where we have our own soccer games and stuff down there as well, so.
I seem to remember the baseball team being there.
They did.
At the baseball field.
Orange Frick did it years ago.
Yeah.
They, no, not available, here at the high school field.
The high school field?
The baseball had...
They did, it was before my time, so I don't know what the guidelines were that they used for that, or if they just sort of, you know, so that was...
Yeah, I'm glad you said, so we didn't, to know if we brought it to a vote or, you know, what have you, but I feel like, like, the Little League down at Dale Street has had those particular signs for quite a while. Is that something that, like, do, does Parks and Rec have to approve them?
It's all been approved to them, yeah.
It gets approved through them?
Yep.
So, I mean...
I think the delineation here is that you're talking about school property versus like a park or a town property or Little League field. It's just making sure that whatever we decide, it's, it's in alignment with what the school wants to stand for because of school property.
And understanding that eventually, like, if we set some sort of guidelines, you know, our boosters, when I was in another district, boosters did something like this in the actual gymnasium. So, they sold, they sold signs that went up in the, on the football field in the fall, and then they basically moved those signs into the gym in the, in the winter, and that's like, okay, well, now those are like advertising to a captive audience that has to come to school every day, and that, so it's just, it just gets into a little, you know, I'm not saying it can't be done, I'm not saying, I'm not trying to, you know, put any type of damper on it, I just think we should be smart about it so we don't get, get ourselves caught up in something that we don't want to be caught up in.
So, we don't have any type of existing policy that, like, I know the yearbook sells ads, where businesses can take out an ad in a year, or I know Drama has ads at their program, or...
I don't think, I mean, we don't have anything that's a formal policy about it, I don't know, I don't know if they use regulations that might be sort of commonsensish, like, you know, but who knows, I don't know. I don't know what they use for that exactly. I know that that's, I think, is specifically one of the things that is almost like excluded in our policy. I think it said something in there like, it will not prohibit the yearbook from selling ads, or something like, you know, like, there was some things in there, so. I think this is more for just when it's on our property, so. But, and even if it, and, and maybe it is something that's just a good thing to clean up overall, because if we have just general advertising guidelines, maybe it's something that we can just remind everybody once we get them refreshed, so.
Yes. Good business.
I'll mention one thing. I was going to print out an article and kind of put it in here, and I couldn't get a good one, but just so you are aware, if you haven't heard, which you might not have, because it's probably not in your day-to-day circle, but the commissioner of education announced that he is resigning. So, he announced that a couple weeks ago, so the commissioner, Commissioner Riley will be resigning effective March 15th, so. And then the associate commissioner, I can't think of his name right now, but anyway, he's, his associate will be taking over on the interim basis while they do the, the search, Russell Johnson's who it is, he will be taking over. And, and Russell plays a big role, especially with special ed, I've worked with him before in another district when we were doing some more turnaround type stuff, so I'm sure we'll be in, in good hands with him for a few months, and then we'll see what happens with, what they do for a more permanent solution, so. Kind of, it, it was sort of unexpected the way it came out, it just sort of, you got a thing that basically he was resigning in a month. Wasn't overly unexpected though, because I know that typically sometimes when you have a new governor, you can sort of expect some of these changes, and the governor's been in office now basically one year, so it might have been part of that sort of transition, so.
Yes. Motion for adjournment?
Second.
I think you just made your own vote.
Yeah, I made my own vote.
I was, I was asking, I was asking for one.
Keep going.
I meant to say, I mean...
You waited a vote. You elected him.
I seconded too. I didn't, I meant it another way.
So, kids, you guys want to vote each? No.
No.
It still wasn't even a record.
No. Brittany said much better last. It might be a record for you, but I never had one, so.
It was all by Saturday, 25.
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks like right now it's going to be on the sixth, okay, so the high school graduation would be the first, that Monday would be the town meeting on the third.